I'm gonna redo.
As Mayor of the Borough of New Freedom, I hereby call this organizational meeting to be in order. Could we rise and pledge the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the government for which it stands, one nation, one ground, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
You can remain standing for a moment. I'd like us to take a moment to remember those that serve us, either at home on our shores, in the service, or in foreign lands. Also, our EMS providers, our fire service providers, that they stay safe and well. And I also ask that you remember two very important people in our community, Keith Wilhelm and Michael Eden, who passed away in the last week. They've been very important to our community, and we would like to just take a moment of remembrance. Thank you. May be seated. Will now accept nominations for the office of President of New Freedom Council.
I'd like to nominate Andy Bobby for President of Council.
Andy Bobby's been nominated. Are there any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, you have voted. You have voted the aye.
Oh, sorry, I just closed it. There's no other nominations. Just close it. Okay. Nominations are now accepted for the office of Vice President.
I'd nominate Ryan Ross.
Ryan Ross has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Office is now open for President Pro Tem. Do I have any nominations for the office of Pro Tem?
I'd nominate Dennis Sarpin.
Dennis Sarpin has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Nominations are now closed. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nominations are now closed. I want to remind everybody that the meeting's being recorded, and by staying, that you imply consent. Okay. We also have some appointments that I think everybody has a copy of. I'll just read them through them. It's right up here. Most of these have already been. Andrew Schaefer is the manager. He's also the Secretary for Council, the Assistant Treasurer, and the Pension CAO. Tara Calman, is Calman? Calman is the Treasurer and the Assistant Secretary. Wade Portner is the Zoning Officer, Building Code Official, Building Inspector, and Flood Plane Administrator. Dave Jones is from Stock and Leader. He's our Solicitor. Arrow, A-R-R-O Consulting, Engineering for GIS, which is all the marks you see on the street. They've been mapping our water and sewer lines, and they also are Engineer for Stormwater and Special Project Assignment. Warehouse is our Engineer for General Services and Subdivision of Land Development Activity. Boo Carthorn continues to be our Engineer for Existing Water and Sewer Projects. We're asking Kim Butcher again to be on the Police Commission, and Erica is going to also be on the Police Commission, and Inga and I will be alternates on the Police Commission. I'm asking Dave Ristorf to be our Rep for Local Government Advisory Committee. Andy Schaefer will be the Alternate, and Dave Ristorf will be our Rep for Adams Tax Bureau, and Andrew will be the Alternate. Dave will also be the Rep for the Tax Collection Committee, and Andrew will be the Alternate. Kim Butcher will be our Delegate for Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs, and Andrew Schaefer will be the Alternate. Ryan Ross will be the Liaison for both the Planning Commission, since he's on the Planning Commission, and also for the New Freedom Borough Recreation Commission. Kim Butcher will remain our Liaison for Rose Fire and EMS. The Personnel Committee will be chaired by Ryan Ross, and will have members of Andy Schaefer and Andy Bobby. Public Safety, which is Police, Fire, EMS, and Civil Preparedness is Kim Butcher, and members will be Burnell Wildison and myself. And the Susquehannetennial, did I pronounce it right? I got it good? Okay. That'll be led by Burnell, and you need to pick who you want.
Yeah, I'm gonna, probably by the next meeting, I'll have my whole, because of the holiday, I didn't really get a chance to.
No, it's okay. Yeah, that's fine.
Because I have some people in mind, but I think, oh, good.
Okay. EMS and Fire Funding is an ongoing operation, and Ann Shemo has been spearheading that effort, so I've asked Ann to stay on. There's actually a meeting this Thursday, and I will chair the EMS Fire Funding, and Kim and I will be on with Ann. And we actually need a meeting before Thursday, because we want to make sure we have a common goal, and so I'll talk to you. Yeah. We can talk about it right after. Business Development for New and Existing Businesses will be chaired by Dave, and it'll be Burnell, Inga, and Andy Schaefer. And the Intergovernmental Committee will continue to be Kim and Erica.
Next one. Infrastructure.
Oh, I'm sorry. Where is that?
Right under 100.
Oh, I got, yeah, you did miss it. Okay. Water, Sewer, and Stormwater and Roads will be Dennis Sarpin Chair, and Burnell and I will be on that committee as well. And we have a meeting scheduled for January to continue, I think it's the 25th, to continue our discussions with other municipalities about upgrading the sewer plant. Does anyone have any questions? Anyone that doesn't want to do it? Okay. Yeah, can I have motion then?
So moved. Do you have motion already?
No. Okay. Any other discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
My vote is aye. Okay. Public Comment and Visitors.
Jean Merrill, I live at Acorn Ray Court, New Freedom. And I have a question. I noticed that they were going around and painting our water and sewer lines. Are they getting ready to do something in particular?
That was, I mentioned that. That's the GIS system. They're putting everything into what basically is a geolocation system, so that we can find everything easily.
Okay. Thank you.
They even painted my vent right up against my house. I've gotten several calls and comments about that, people wanting to know how long they need to keep that up, and I think, Andrew, you said probably another month?
Yeah, it should all be finished up within the next month.
So please, don't take them down. I've seen several of them, people moved them to the middle of their yard, and it's very important that we accomplish this right now. If you notice that one is mistaken, please call the Borough Office. My sewer line is not in the middle of my house. It is along the sidewalk, so I made a call, and they came out and corrected that. It's very important that we know where those things are, so if you see an error, please call the Office and talk to Andrew, and they'll send somebody out to correct that. Any other public comment? Okay. Approval of minutes for our last council meeting? Ryan, could you get a hold of Inga?
Yeah, she's in Richmond.
Okay. It's Longwood, Richmond. That means she won't be coming through the snowstorm.
No. Motion approved.
Have a motion approved of minutes.
Second.
I have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Cause? My vote is aye. Okay, we do not have a Treasurer's Report as yet, so we'll have double next time. I do not have anything on the President's report. No, we covered it all with Mike and Keith, so we will go to Mr. Mayor. Southern Regional, we just received our numbers today for 11-7 to 12-4. If you would like to go through that and take a look at our calls, we had, I believe, 63 total calls in New Freedom. One thing I know I'm going to discuss this week at the Police Commission meeting is, I've noticed that they have fingerprinting several times listed for New Freedom. This month, they have two listed for Stewartstown, and I really don't think they should be counted as incidents in the long term.
Fingerprinting shouldn't even be an incident unless they're fingerprinting a criminal that they brought in.
So I'm gonna ask them to please remove that, you're correct, unless it's a criminal that they're bringing in to fingerprint. But I know we had a situation before where, because all the fingerprinting was done in New Freedom, it ended up on our report. I also want to report there was a fire at 16 Curly. Lot of damage. The folks have had to move out, started in the garage, apparently fireworks that were detonated and set off, and they decided to clean them up out of the yard. Well, unfortunately, I think, from what I understand, they put the remains in a trash can and put the trash can in the garage. We do have an ordinance, you know, you're allowed to set off fireworks according to that ordinance, but I would remind folks, if you are going to, please take the remnants off of your yard, put it in a bucket of water, not your trash can, okay?
Yeah, I talked to, excuse me, I talked to the owner of Townbound, just down the street, and he said, just from his inspection, the inside of the house, he thinks the hole inside of the house let's be cut. Two-story house.
And the water's all through, all the way on from the first floor, second floor of the basement, so.
Our Fire and EMS, Fire Company especially, did a fantastic job. They were there lickety-split. I think it was around 6:30 a.m. approximately, and they responded within just a few moments. That could have been much worse, not that it isn't quite a disaster as is, but we wish that family well, too, and anything the community can do for them, I hope they will please last now.
Yeah, unfortunately, the owners weren't home at the time, were the children there. Unfortunately, it was the smoke detector that woke them up.
There's another thought. Make sure you have your smoke detectors first of the year. That's the time to change the batteries every year, first of the year, so reminder to everybody out there, please do that. Do you have a question about?
Yeah, Andrew brought up an interesting point. There's three traffic citations listed for Southern School District.
I will bring that up. It could have been, I don't know, maybe kids running the stop sign over at the school or...
No, it's okay. We just kind of wondered about.
But it's counted towards Southern?
Yeah.
Oh, on that page, okay. But it's not listed under incidents on the incident page, is it?
There's three alarms and three threats from Southern School District.
Yeah, so I'll double-check that on Wednesday at the Commission meeting. Let everybody know. Because we do want to make sure that these incidents are done correctly. Again, our...
You were gonna ask the Chief about what they classed as an incident.
Yes. I haven't gotten the chance to do that with the holiday and him covering for other officers that were off their time.
Need to know soon, though.
Yeah, we're gonna get a definite answer to that. Again, I've asked Mike Sharkey, due to the IGA being desperately needing to be completed, I have asked him to change IGA meetings from once a month to twice a month. I really think we need to bear down and get this finished. And I know, Mr. President, you agree, as per our last vote, to accept the budget. That was a part of your criteria, that they have that done. So we will reiterate that on Wednesday night. Again, I would like folks to remember Keith Wilhelm and his family in your prayers, Mike Eden of Eden Toll. He has a 20-year-old and a 13-year-old, and they all need our support and our prayers. So I think, I don't know, I haven't seen when Mike's services are. Has anybody seen?
Friday.
Mike, well, Mike Eden's going to have a viewing, visitation at the Community Center on Thursday from 6th and 9th, and then again from, I believe, 11 to 12, and 12 o'clock service on Friday. So the Community Center will be closed to pickleball and any other events. So if any of you want to attend, that is all open in the public. That's all I have.
All right. All right, just a couple of quick updates on some things this evening. I wanted to provide an update on the crosswalks. We are still waiting the final review with PennDOT. It had moved one step in the review process. We heard today that it's sitting on someone's desk, and with the holidays, obviously, it got pushed back. So it passed through one review, we're waiting on the next. Hopefully, that's good news. Speaking of PennDOT, we did attempt to communicate two additional times with PennDOT regarding the paving on Constitution Avenue. After the profiling was complete, we have yet to receive a formal written response to PennDOT's basically non-acceptance of the paving and the job that was completed. So we're still trying to get something formal from them, still working on that.
Contractors just waiting?
Yeah, we're still holding that final payment application at this point. There's some discrepancies on some quantities as well, so we're working through that. I just wanted to, after we have all the appointments and the committees, I will be putting together basically a 2022 Directory and Budget, so everybody has that, with contact information, budget numbers, to try to reference throughout the year. So that'll be distributed at February's meeting, just kind of a reference tool. And ending on a positive note, of the three applications that were submitted to FEMA under the Hazard Minigation Program, we have already received notice of intent to move to the next round on one of those applications, and that is $200,000 for stormwater improvements. So I did mention the other two applications, and they're still in the review process. So not a complete thumbs-down on those other two applications, but at least we have one moving forward. And that'll help fund the projects that we have scheduled for this year, ahead of the road improvement projects, so.
I got a retention account across the street. They can work on first.
They are that high priority. I don't have anything else unless anybody has any questions.
I got some feedback about the website, and a lot of positive comments, so thank you.
Website's great.
It's on the internet. It's the same website.
It's the same address, but it's 100% better.
It's more than 100%.
Is there a problem accessing that with iPhones? I can't either. Yeah, I can't. For some reason, no. Can't access the website.
I was able to get on the website. The only thing I don't think I could do was the kind of interactive with the treatment center.
Own an iPhone?
No.
With something like that, I didn't really expect to be able to do.
I'll check that, because it should work.
Okay.
I haven't had a chance yet, but I'm sure there's probably like something I can download or some, you know, there might be Adobe thing or Reader or something.
Everything worked, I just went through Safari.
Yeah. See, if I just did before it came, and it wouldn't let me on, it didn't matter.
We'll figure it out, yeah.
Okay, I'll check it out.
We don't really have any engineering reports because of the early time, it's time for the meeting, code enforcement.
It's getting longer.
Yeah. I noticed on that top one, Andrew, it says the new owner must remove the structure before settlement can occur. I thought settlements already occurred, because it was in the paper two months ago.
Correct. That was the...
Dean transfer.
That was the transfer from the defendant that's listed on here to the current owner. There's actually another, almost like a flip, basically.
Okay.
The transfer from the current owner to new buyer, basically, that settlement cannot occur. My understanding is the mortgage company said, as long as that structure's on the property, with the condition that it's in, they've informed the mortgage, so that'll need to be reviewed, and speaking with the current owner, that is going to happen fairly quickly.
I did notice that there are a couple of pictures on here that aren't referenced in the report. Pictures go up to number 18 on the report, but there is a picture of a 19 and 20.
Oh, that's just, they're just...
Oh, okay. Just show us some of what you're talking about there.
Yeah, there's 19 and 20, but we're referencing them.
Oh, okay. All right.
Okay. Subdivision of Land Development Activity. The only thing that's mentioned earlier are the two commercial buildings. The permit is in process for number one.
Yeah, we have not received any plans for a couple of months now.
Can I ask a question about Franklin Square? The apartments or the townhouses down there? In between all of those townhouses, there is a water trench. Isn't that dangerous for children that are coming out of the back doors, the potential for a kid to fall in there and drown? I just can't believe that zoning doesn't have something...
I believe, I'd have to reference the plan again, but I believe that that is basically a detention facility, almost like a small rain garden between the two buildings there, and then that flows down to the end where the actual retention point is.
When you're saying it needs a fence.
I'm saying it needs a fence. Some kid's gonna fall in there, and, you know, a two-year-old, three-year-old waddled down, you know, it goes downhill, big trip, fall, roll down into that, they're not getting out. It worries me.
Could it be your name?
It could be. We leave seven.
The problem is that you can, most of those stormwater facilities right now are still in EMS mode, so they're not, they're still in construction mode. They're not finalized yet. That could change if there is a water level in there.
I think their final one is too, because it looks like they still have their EMS stuff out there. We just, I walked by the other day, and it looks like their EMS stuff is still there. Matter of fact, now that you're talking about the last one, ultimate one, however you want to describe it, because it's been dry, I went down before it rained, and it, there wasn't a lot of water, there wasn't a lot of water, because a lot of sediment, so they hadn't cleaned it yet and converted to stormwater retention or detention.
Now, that's out front, you're talking about.
Well, I'm talking, yeah, way in the back.
Okay, I'm talking about in between the townhouses.
But that flows, too.
So we will keep an eye on that?
Yeah, they asked for a bond reduction on their stormwater, and we would not release it because they're still in construction, and all of those facilities tie together. And they're building, they're issuing a permit for building one, possibly issuing a permit for building two in near future, so we need to make sure that those facilities match what was indicated on the drawings.
Okay. Because I noticed the pipe is up here, and the water is down below the pipe, so there's no way it's gonna drain into the pipe unless we get a major downpour. There's no way that that, the way it's set up now, it's coming out of the pipe, right? No. I don't know where it's coming from, but it's not gonna go anywhere. That's the problem. It just sits in that swale. Swale in between the two townhouses.
We'll take a look at it. That's our problem.
Yeah, there are two of them, one in between each section. That just worries the daylights out of me that somebody's asking for a problem. Thanks for looking at that, I appreciate it.
Everything else is, oh, okay, we could actually... I think we're gonna leave the parking lot South Front until we figure out, until the NCR gets back to us.
Leave it on the agenda, though?
Yeah, that's fine. I don't want to forget about it.
You had mentioned that maybe we bring it up again in April.
This is the parking that they want to put in alongside the tracks?
No, this is just parking on South Front Street, where, you know, we're just, we kind of want to direct people. kind of want to direct people towards the municipal lot.
Right, right.
We have the petition to open the alley, so.
Yeah, we, we have everything we need now. We've received the label description, but we received it not outside. We need 14 days to advertise it between the, before the meeting. We did not receive it in that timeframe, so we need it in February now. So we're still, we're still moving forward, trying to, but we have everything we need right now to send notices and then get it advertised, and we should be okay.
I don't see any reason to open the 22 budget unless somebody has a... Then the approval of the appointments, was that what we just did? Okay, so we just need to go to the zoning and planning commission, which will be seen and date?
So with the zoning hearing board, we did have a member that did not want to be reappointed, so we reached out to the alternate, who's now listed as a, a member. That does leave an alternate position open, but I want to wait till this evening to approve this resolution and move everything forward that we can advertise for an opening for an alternate to the zoning hearing board, which will require another resolution, but that's not a big deal, so.
Can we have one open today? I know it's hard enough to get anybody to...
Yeah, I believe the ordinance says...
Two?
Two or three.
Yeah, we actually had two people apply for planning.
That's...
And we actually brought them both, both in. One is, is a regular member, and one is an alternate.
Okay.
So, yeah, we didn't, I didn't want to let anybody go who wanted to volunteer.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So you will advertise for alternates for the zoning hearing board?
Correct. This is gonna be our first resolution of the new year.
Is 01.
22, 01. Okay, so I need a motion to approve Charles Endress, William Taylor, and Rodney Womack for their terms as indicated.
Make a motion that we approve all three with the terms listed.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, by aye?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye.
I have a question about this one, I don't, when do you obtain this vote?
Probably would be safe, this thing is.
We've got a corps and stuff.
Yeah, yeah, we're okay, that's fine.
Just fill out the form.
This is for Planning Commission, and we have Teresa Ruby, Matt Hopkins, Eric Icaulk, Ryan Ross, and Gene Merle, for the terms indicated.
Motion to approve.
And I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Okay, and then this, this is a resolution for Rec Council. It has Mary Ann Michaels, Valerie Strange, Richard Garvey, Lisa Zapick, and Sharon Boyle for the terms indicated. And this is actually establishing... Right, and we never had a... Correct. Motion to approve?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I have a question on the planning commission. Do we, do we have the name of the alternate? Or are they just volunteers members?
I'm sorry? What, we did just put them on the planning commission?
No, it's just the one.
What do we do with, can I say?
Icaulk was the one that we put on.
Right. Yeah, planning, planning commission, NPC doesn't say anything about planning commission.
Okay, I thought we were, decided that we could, we already did it. Well, I mean, we need a, we need a zoning alternate. It might be an idea to contact him and ask him if he would...
Yeah, I mean, we can always, we can always do that.
What's the borough code require, five?
Well, that's not listed in the borough code, it would be the NPC, and it would be the, you know, the Freedom Code. I believe it's the fives for planning. I'll, we'll check, and if we need to change something.
What's, what's, what's a core, it's only two on planning, right?
Well, it would be three. Three if there's five.
Three of the storm, okay. And we might want to contact the other guy for, for the zoning alternate.
We haven't contacted either one of them to tell them what they got yet or not.
Yes, we have.
Yes. Where was it? Did we vote on this one?
Yes.
We did, okay. Okay. We've always used Robert's Rules of Order, more or less. This, this actually formally adopts Robert's Rules of Order for running the council meetings. It'll still be fairly loose, but if we need them, they'll be here, so.
I make a motion to accept Robert's Rules.
Yep.
I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Is this, this is kind of what we've discussed, and you have just compiled them all into one place, so for easy reference. This is our list of fees by resolution. It makes it easier to update fees, because then we just have to do a resolution each time. These are actually what we currently have, so we're just approving what we have and formalizing it.
We changed on a couple of, we clarified some things with regards to the building permits, or building permit fees, just made it a little cleaner to understand. And then we did update the inspection fees. Probably increased those anywhere between five and $10 for inspection, just to come into, I don't know if it's compliance, but...
More, yeah, what we're actually spending.
Right.
Okay.
There was a question earlier about why we quit the discount period for the refuse.
We stopped doing that as part of the one-year extension in the budget for next year, basically, because before this last extension of the one-year contract, the borough was already absorbing a loss on the refuse contract.
Right.
So we needed to make that increase, one, to catch up, and two, to make the contract whole again from what the current rate was in the one-year increase. So offering a discount would just put us more in, in a hole to try to cover the, the difference.
I remember that, okay. I guess there are a couple of new ones in here, too, that we didn't use before, like structures in the right-of-way storage fee.
That would be after, that should be, that should be the only new one.
In other words, if everybody has to go pick it up, bring it here to get it back.
How this whole basketball hoop and all the street thing.
Question about copies, 25 cents a copy, does that mean like, if anybody didn't want to run to Shrewsbury, they'd be allowed to come in?
No, it would be, it's really for right to know, it's not, we're not a, a Kinko's in the club.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, no, yeah, it's just...
For other borough paperwork.
Right, yeah. And then, of course, if, I mean, if Rec needs copies of flyers or something like that, they're in charge, you know? I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we accept the...
Miscellaneous fees.
All the fees, yes.
Motion and a second, any further discussion?
Is this gonna be on the website?
Yeah, yeah, all of the, we'll put that under the Borough News and...
Make it easy for folks.
There's also gonna be, we're, I was looking at some things today to actually create another link in documents, because we have to put on our Act 44 pension information and things that can be reference material such as this, so.
Oh, okay.
We're gonna add another section, another page to the...
So all the resolutions will be on?
We can do that if you'd like, sure.
Well, it wouldn't be bad, I mean, they'll give us a home for everything, and then everybody could look at whatever they need to look at.
Yeah, that's, it's not difficult.
Okay, that's a good idea.
Who, who made the second?
I think it was Dave. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Okay, that brings us down to correspondence, and we have actually two. There's a second, a second one that came in. Well, the first one is, is the Police Commission, and I'll just read it. It says during the December 15th Borough meeting, it's, I'm sorry, it's from Glenrock Borough. During the December 15th Borough meeting, council discussed the Southern Regional Police Department budget, or more specifically, the lack of one. Council voted to freeze approval of the budget for 30 days as permitted by the current Southern Regional Police Department Second Amendment and restated joint municipal agreement for law enforcement services. Glenrock Borough Council finds it impossible to approve a budget when no budget has been presented to council for its review. It's almost a shame on Glenrock Borough representatives to the Police Commission that they didn't...
And I did, I did bring that to the meeting.
Yeah, you brought it to us, so...
I brought it up to Glenrock Council, right.
Yeah, so...
And we were told we'd have to wait.
Yeah. So anyway, it's a, there's nothing we can do about it, it's just a 30-day budget moratorium for... The other thing that we received is a more positive note. It's from the New Freedom Lions Club, and it's Mr. Bobby and New Freedom Borough Council members, the New Freedom Lions Club would like to express our thanks to the New Freedom Borough Council for allowing the Lions the use of the New Freedom Community Center on October 15th for a panel discussion on human trafficking. That's the subjects, but the event was attended by 110 community members, which is good, and was both informative and well-received by the attendees. There were also nine organizations on hand to distribute additional information on trafficking and other related public safety issues. This type of community awareness programs are important to help inform community members of this serious problem and assist concerned family members in determining ways to protect their children from this risk. The Lions Club was pleased to sponsor and organize this event and truly appreciated your strong support of this event. Thank you again for your support of this community awareness event, and signed by William Taylor, New Freedom Lions Club. Okay, that brings us to public comment on anything else anyone would like to talk about. Okay.
Yeah, I'm a public.
You are a public.
Where are we with cleaning of the Lions room and the upstairs rooms, Andrew, and the vents?
Yeah, all the, all the filters were actually changed today. Donnie and I have a date scheduled to basically go up. There's quite a few things that we need to look at, the community center, we have a pretty lengthy list, and, and all those items are on that list, so we have that, I shouldn't say we have it being set, but we discussed all the items and trying to find a spot where we both have time to run up and, and take a look and check off the list. So by February's meeting, I'll have to report back.
If you'd have let me know, I wouldn't mind going along, since they pointed out some things to me, and I don't know if you know where all the keys are in the closets which contain the equipment.
Well, between, between...
Okay, I didn't know if you did in your closets.
I'm looking, I'm not, I'm not browsing. I wanted to also announce that we have an executive session scheduled that'll be on Monday, January 10th, at 3:00, and that's an update on pending litigation. So that'll happen on that date, and everybody, it's gonna be in council chambers. Did everybody get that? And I have nothing else. Does anyone else have anything for committee? Do any other thing, I think we, okay?
I'd say a quick question for the committees that I'm on and things like that, is there information on...
Yeah, Andrew has, yeah, has all the information for it. And I did mention that we have, also have another DCD, it's actually turning into a merger discussion for EMS. It'll be this Thursday, I think it's at 3:00. And then I'll talk to Kim about time for us to meet before that. And I have nothing else. I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
And as motions for adjournment?
I'll second.
Have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My vote is aye.